Good evening and welcome to the June 9, 2020, meeting of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee. I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:04. And this open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020. And information on how to join school committee meetings and meeting agendas are posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Be aware that anything you broadcast may be captured, probably will be captured by the recording. Quick note about public comment. Community comments are an opportunity for members of the community to be heard. Once the public comment section of the meeting has been concluded, unsolicited comments from the community will no longer be permitted. And school committee members, as a reminder, please remember to virtually raise your hand when you'd like to speak and wait to be recognized. And please begin by stating your name. All right, before we get started, I'd like to just share a brief statement from the Regional School Committee. In this letter to the community, Dr. Kio discussed the protests against the systemic racism that led to the deaths of George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Breonna Taylor, and that the status quo is, quote, unacceptable, and as a nation, we must demand change from our leaders, end quote. We agree with the need to demand change from our national leaders, yet we must also demand change of ourselves. The members of the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee agree with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees' statement that we, quote, "as school leaders, must look to policies, practices, and procedures that often unintentionally produce inequitable outcomes for children at risk, and adopt strong anti-racism policy statements locally to show our commitment to identify, challenge, and change values, structures, and behaviors that can create systemic racism." "We must move with purpose to ensure that we, as a people, act deliberately to demonstrate to all Americans that prejudice and hate will not be tolerated and will be challenged at every turn," end quote. That's an MASC statement issued on June 4, 2020. "We believe in Dover Sherburne's core values: commitment to community, equity and excellence, respect and dignity, and climate of care. And we support the district leaders and their commitment to use these guiding principles as they, quote, 'identify, challenge, and change values, structures, and behaviors,' end quote, in addressing systemic prejudice to facilitate moving our community forward." And I'd like to ask Kate Potter to share a little brief info about a community event tonight.
Thanks, Ann. Yes, I just want to briefly let people know that tonight at Pilgrim Church in Sherburne at 7:00 PM, sorry, pardon my dog, there will be a peace vigil. And I want to thank the Dover School Committee and the Regional School Committee for being flexible and starting your times a little earlier so that those of us who want to go can scoot over to the vigil. I somehow landed myself on the organizing team for this last week, and it was a tiny seed of an idea. And it's been amazing how it's taken on a life of its own. And people from all different parts of our community, different faith communities, people of no faith community have reached out and said, we want to be a part of this. How can we join in, including our own Tom Dupre? And Dr. Kio will be speaking among some other town and religious leaders. So I just think people really feel a need to come together at this time and to listen to each other and be heard and to work towards change. So you're all welcome to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. And since that's supposed to start at 7, we pretty much have a hard stop at...
Longer than anything else you wear.
Seven. Um, yeah. Is it Amy? Maybe? Can you mute, please? Thank you. I could hear somebody in the background. All right, let's get started. We'll start with community comments. Are there any? No? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to staff reports. We start with Mr. Kellett with the middle school.
Scott, you need to unmute.
You have to unmute, please.
That would help.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mrs. Hovey. Thank you, Dr. Kio, and the rest of the committee. I'll give you a brief overview of what we have. We, in our report, we gave you an update on our goals from last year's school improvement plan. And it is a pretty lengthy list of undertakings that we had, and I don't think it even touches on all of them. And that's in an abbreviated year, you know, with the remote learning, all of our efforts shifted to to the remote learning. So kudos to our staff for making that happen. I want to also thank our students and teachers for their efforts in the remote learning. They've really, they've really done a fantastic job. Our teachers have surveyed students, and the feedback they've gotten has been very positive. Of course, they wish they were here. I would be remiss if I did not thank Beth and Monique, Ms. Monique, for their efforts in bringing together groups of students and parents and staff members as we work through the awful situation that started in Minneapolis a week and a half ago. You might notice, I did want to mention the eighth grade CAG that had their virtual talent challenge and raised almost $4,500. It was really neat. If you did not see it, you should take a look at it. And then I want to thank Stephen Robleski, who's leaving us in a few weeks, to go to Bangkok, Kevin McIntosh, who has been here over 20 years teaching ELA, he's moving on to write books, and Marilyn Mahoney, one of our EAs. She is retiring as well. So I thank them all for their service. And I would just let you know that on Tuesday, our eighth grade event started today when we did a virtual Zoom meeting that was recorded with our student speakers. We had four student speakers give their speeches, and we will share that with parents and eighth grade students next week and do a parade around the front of the building next Tuesday. So if anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
No questions? We're good. Thank you very much, Mr. Kellett. I appreciate that. And also a thank you to Mr. Robleski and Mr. McIntosh. And I didn't write down the third name, sorry.
Sorry. Ms. Mahoney.
Oh, Ms. Mahoney. I'm so sorry. We'll miss them. Thank you. All right, Mr. Smith with the high school report, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Hovey and Dr. Kio, and members of the Regional School Committee. We, today, I just wanted to let the Regional School Committee know that as part of conversations that we had at a department head meeting last week and follow-up conversations, we, thanks to Carly Blaze, art teacher, Erin Newton, Caroline Samaloff, and Gretchen Donahue, English teachers, and Gretchen is the English Department Chair, we convened a Zoom session of the conversation, which is a student, primarily a student-led group that tackles a wide range of issues that are important relative to students, relative to our school community in the world. And I wanted to thank those teachers for putting that together. We had about 42 participants today, about 20 students and about 20 some odd teachers. We discussed the obvious police brutality that took place in Minneapolis. Topics also included white privilege and what, you know, defining what white privilege is. We discussed understanding the Metco program better. We talked a little bit about state and federal laws and what can be done on a local level at Dover Sherburne and also at our state and our national level. And the way that it worked in the conversation is we have Ms. Blaze as the moderator, but really it was all led by students. So students had the questions, they got to respond to each other, and it was a nice process whereby there was some really good dialogue and conversation and some good questions. And I was really proud of the kids, and I was really pleased that we were able to do that. Dr. Kio joined us last week when we had a meeting with our Boston students, along with Ms. McCoy and Ms. Monique, to address, you know, their concerns and how they're feeling about all of these issues and what we can do to support those students. And it was great. Some of our Boston students were in on today's session as well. And as I said, we had a pretty wide mix of kids, which was fantastic. I also wanted to point out that we have a teacher retiring, Mr. Tucker, longtime science teacher and science department chair is retiring. High school right now is quite busy. We have our book return happening next week. I know Scott does as well, and we've got it spread out over three days with all safety and hygiene protocols in place as requested by the superintendent, the school lead nurse, as well as the respective boards of health. Tomorrow night, we'll be conducting our senior awards through Zoom. The senior awards are twofold. Some of them are scholarships that are given out by some of our school organizations, outside organizations and community organizations. And then there's also the last portion, which are the academic departmental awards. We'll be doing those tomorrow night on Zoom. We had received a request from Art Crandall at Dover Sherburne Cable, and so we will record it, and it will be available for viewing at a later date. We also, this week, will be distributing caps and gowns. We're very pleased that all of those came in, along with the honor cords and everything. So we're good to go there. And then, as I said, we're also, in addition to the book return, we're also going to be, at the same time, coordinating the distribution of summer materials for students who have summer reading, AP tasks to take care of. So the high school is a busy, buzzing place right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Does anybody have any questions? Mr. Jaffe?
Michael Jaffe. Hi. I'm just going to sandwich my thanks to really everybody, middle school administration staff, high school, business office, central office. You guys are just, continue to march on with just everything that gets thrown at you with poise, calm, and creativity. And just a big thanks for all you're doing across the board. It is so deeply appreciated.
May I ask a question?
Oops, sorry. Yes, Lynn.
Sorry. I'm sorry. Could you talk a little bit about what some of the takeaways were in your meetings with the students and the Metco kids?
Yes, certainly. So the two separate meetings, and certainly Dr. Kio and Ms. McCoy can also talk about that other one. But I think the takeaways from the Metco students, the Boston students, they were pleased that we were supportive of them, but I guess they had hoped we would have reached out sooner. We reached out on Monday, and as you know, there was, there was a lot of consternation that took place in the city of Boston on Sunday evening. It was really the first evening where some of those demonstrations and protests became a bit violent, and there was some arrests and other things like that. So there was that piece. I think there was also an acknowledgement that, you know, what it is that they have to do each and every day to get up and to come to school and things that they have to face that sometimes we, as a school community, may take for granted, frankly. So I think that was a real takeaway. I think another takeaway that I have as a leader is, you know, there are more things that we need to be doing on a daily, weekly basis and really paying attention to the fine details, making sure that we are, you know, constantly on top of these issues. And they're complex and they're difficult. And I think, you know, I told the students myself that I was struggling to comprehend, you know, how in 2020 we could have just such heinous crimes and such terrible behavior. And I think that, listening to them, it was, for me, a real, real good reminder that, you know, these are things that they face probably on a daily basis or worry about and that we do when it becomes a major, highly exposed media production, right? So that was that. Today's takeaways were the fact that the students were really interested in having these conversations and talking. And clearly, it's obvious that they're missing being in school and having those chances to interact with each other and talk about those things, whether it's at lunch in the hall, in a class with a teacher, et cetera. So, you know, there were a lot of kids saying, you know, thank you for doing this. This is great. I think for some kids, it was a real weight off their shoulders of being able to just talk about it. I think they clearly have spoken to it with their parents and maybe some siblings. But it was nice to be able to do that. And there was some, there was some good conversation back and forth with, you know, what's real change look like? And, you know, how can we take this and really make systematic change and not just have a wave of movement that dies off, you know, which we unfortunately saw a few years ago? So I think those were some of the takeaways. The other takeaway is where the kids do want to continue talking about these issues, and they do want to continue to see what we can do locally and what they can do on various levels to help be part of that change.
Can I add one thing to that? And I know that we're short on time, so I'll just be quick. And I can talk a little bit more about it at the joint school committee meeting in my presentation of my superintendent's report. But I think, Lynn, one of my big takeaways was that, from, I was in the conversation with our students from Boston on Friday, and one of my big takeaways was that they would like us to more actively offer education about race, conversations, coursework, curriculum about race, about others besides Martin Luther King, that African Americans have made a difference in the world. And I really feel as if they would like us to acknowledge that, as I've heard it referred to as our country's original sin, which is slavery. And I think it's very awkward for the kids to have, to be the lone black student in a class when we're talking about slavery. But it's such an important, important part of our history. So finding ways to have those conversations and addressing kind of the challenges that come with it. It was a really, really healthy and emotionally draining conversation. I don't think I even am now fully recovered. It was hard, but it was probably harder for our students. They told us, they, one of the comments I heard that really stuck was that I'm tired of teaching you guys about, you know, what it's like to be a black person in America. And that really resonated. I want to compliment Beth McCoy and Monique for making that happen. They urged me, I sent the email, but they were behind it. And I really am so thankful that they encouraged me to do that and that John and our other leaders were there.
I think that says a lot, that they were, they felt safe to say that to you. That says a lot.
Yeah. Judy?
Yeah, I just, I really am thrilled and applaud what you're doing. I had an experience this week that I want to share with you, which is I, my family and I watched Do the Right Thing, which was made in 1989. And I don't know how many of you have seen the movie or seen it recently. So I'm not going to tell you what happens in the end. But it is incredibly, it is far more powerful now than it would have been if you had watched it last year or the year before. And I think it's actually important for people to watch the movie because it gives you a great understanding of what our Boston students are saying, you know, and that they're tired of teaching us this. And it gave me a whole lot of perspective. So, you know, you may want to, in the future, think about using that, although it could only be used at the high school, not the middle school, you know, in some sort of teaching. That's it.
Thanks, Judy. Maggie?
I guess I have two things to say on this topic. And also to say, echo what Michael has said earlier in terms of a huge thank you to the staff at the high school and the middle school in terms of all the complex things and the leadership in terms of all the complex things that you have done to make this year a memorable, successful, and a productive one for our students. Regarding the issues that we're all grappling with as a community, and the point that you made, Andrew, that some of our students would like the racial education to be more robust, you know? And this is where having a regional school committee where we really only deal with the middle school and high school, I think, is too bad. But we also have some of you who span that K to 12. And the one thing I would ask is that we look at this as a K to 12 conversation. The conversation that I had with folks this week was that, you know, some people say, you know, first grade kindergarten, that's too young to talk about race with kids. We should just let them be innocent. And I think that for white kids, that's maybe true. But for children of color, that's not realistic, and it's not fair for kids to suddenly learn the hard truths about the reality of our country when they're in high school or middle school even. They need to sort of, from the beginning, have a more nuanced and complex understanding of the reality of our country in order for us to all kind of grow to be better human beings in community. So that would be.
Yeah, obviously. Thank you, Maggie. Obviously, this is the beginning of many more conversations, which is a good thing. Keep all these ideas coming and write things down. And I'm sure that we'll have opportunities to talk about this again in the near future and more and more. Thank you. Is there anything, Dawn, you wanted to mention about the warrant? Or should we just go straight to the financials?
Yeah, no, the warrant's just for your, we missed it last month, so you're going to see a few more listed. But those are just, the warrants have been signed by Ann today.
Okay. Thanks. All right. So now we're going to go to the financials. And just a quick reminder to the Dover warrant and the Sherburne advisory reps, if you have questions, if you can please wait until the RSC members completed our discussion. And then if you raise your hand, wait to be recognized, then we'll see what we have time, unfortunately. We'll see if we have time to get to, and then I'll recognize you, and we can, and Dawn can probably answer your questions at that point. Thanks. Dawn?
I tried to give you as much information as possible in your report this month, so you had time to think about it and weren't listening to it the first, the first pass when we're sitting on a Zoom meeting. But basically, if we look at your statement of operations on both revenue and the expense side, it basically, there's not a lot of changes since we last met in May. But what we're able to do now is take a closer look at these and project what we need to do for fiscal year '21, given sort of the situation that we're in. I will note that on your revenue side, you do see a little bit of an increase in Chapter 71 Transportation. Since our last meeting, we did receive our final payment. They tried to get it out to all the school districts early, knowing that they paid it at 84% reimbursement this year. And the second reason was is because they know that almost all the school districts negotiated a reduced per diem rate on their transportation contracts, which means we have less transportation expenses in our financials this year. If you remember how Chapter 71 works, we get reimbursed next year based on what our expenses are in our end-of-the-year report this year. So we're going to have less expense this year, and that's what we're going to get reimbursed on. So they encouraged all school committees, regional school committees, to take that extra money that obviously was not budgeted because the cherry sheets didn't have 84% reimbursement and transfer that to your regional transportation fund in order to provide for the shortage of reimbursement we're going to encounter next year because we're going to have more expenses, because hopefully we're up and running. But the revenue that we're going to have to offset, that's going to be less because the cherry sheet that I've used for your budget purposes was assuming we were going to have our full complement of transportation. So that is a piece that, like I said, they got the transportation payments out to us early to allow school committees to be able to take this action and put aside the extra monies we got this year to cover you next year. Not only for the shortage, but they also have no idea what kind of reimbursement we're going to see next year for transportation. It will be nowhere near the 84%, and they don't know when we could potentially get back to the 84% range. So it was a blessing in disguise this year. But that was, that is one of the items that I'm bringing forward to tonight to take action on is that transfer. Any questions on that piece? Okay. So the, what I thought would be very helpful, and I included it in your packet, was a mini roll forward of E and D so that you can follow through on some of the, on the other transaction or motion that I'm asking you to do. So basically, we start with our certified E and D from last year, which was your million two three. Then basically, that you, that we use that to roll through all of our operations. So your revenue surplus, and you can, these all tie to your financials. Your revenue surplus was a positive $37,000. Your operating surplus was a positive $1,001,000. I will stop for a second and just explain a little bit. I mean, that's, the $1,001,000 seems like an extravagant amount of excess. But if you take into consideration the transportation situation, one, the use of the regional transportation reimbursement fund from last year of close to $300,000, and the fact that we had about $114,000 savings on our current contract, all of that is reflected in your $1,001,000. And in addition, it's the coaches' salaries that showing up as a favorable operating expense that we obviously didn't pay any of our spring coaches, and that was close to $90,000. If you back out those numbers, we're looking at more of like a $650,000 surplus, which is only 2.5% of our budget. So sometimes I think we talk, we see these numbers, but I think it's really important to put them in perspective to your total budget. So to be within 2.5% of your budget, actually, you wouldn't want to be, you got to be careful about how tight you are. But I don't think that that's a huge amount to be, have excess. Also, given that there's other school closure expenses that are impacting that $650,000. I noted in your report, there's a little bit of savings for utilities. Obviously, there's a little bit of savings for supplies because we didn't have that last third of the year. And a few other savings from no overtime for the custodians and some of our stipends because the activities didn't get completed, didn't get paid out. So there's also some padding in that $650,000 of just savings from the school closure. So then that gives us our total surplus of $1,192,000. So as you know, the school committee, and when they approved the fiscal year '21 budget, also approved the use of E and D for your capital projects. So that's the $575,000 that's earmarked to be used for capital. I will say that's another blessing in disguise because we are one of the few schools right now that's been able to forge forward with capital projects because we're not delayed by town meetings that haven't happened. So it is giving us some access to get some projects done on a quicker basis. We had paving already completed. We've got flooring projects that are going to be probably starting in the next couple of weeks because a lot of our contractors can't get into any other places because their capital projects haven't been approved. So I, it's been very beneficial for us to have had that approved by the school committee so that we can move forward with those projects now and not be delayed. We'd probably lose the whole summer had we gone with the towns providing funding for those. If you remember, too, we've allocated $175,000 of E and D to offset or to add to your revenue sources. And that $175,000, the $75,000 was the revenue surplus that we had projected back in March when we did your budget. And the $100,000, remember, was healthcare savings, a combination of our retirees and a little bit of the other so that we can put money forward to fund OPEP. So we added that to your existing So we added that to your existing mine item. So we know that we probably at least have $100,000 that will go towards OPEP. Remember, this year, you had your Steve money already in the budget. But we started seeing some savings from the cost share. So we wanted to capture that and not lose it and put it forward to next year so it can be contributed to the OPEP fund. Then you'll also see the proposed transfer to the regional transportation fund, which is the $85,000. That will flow through E and D and then out, technically, we'll make that transfer and it'll go over to your regional transportation fund. The next issue, and I've spent hours and hours on calls with Dusty and other business administrators. We've been told to do whatever we can to prepare for what is perceived to be at least a 10% to 15% reduction in Chapter 70. And they're telling us it's going to be based on fiscal year '20, not what we expected for fiscal year '21. So based on that, we could potentially be, have almost a $350,000 shortfall on our Chapter 70 monies. To be, to prepare a little bit of cushion for us, I'm suggesting that we use an additional $200,000 of E and D. And in your budget, reduce your Chapter 70 expected revenues by $200,000 and increase your use of E and D by $200,000 to protect us from the perceived and known shortfalls that we should be seeing probably not until the fall on Chapter 70 revenue. By doing that, you can see what the uses of E and D are, which total amount of $1,000,000, which is basically our surplus for this year, which puts us with a projected E and D balance of $1,003,000 based on our fiscal year '21 budget number, which would mean a projected excess right now of about $80,000 that once everything, once E and D is certified next year, anything that would go back to the towns would then be reducing their fiscal year '21 assessments. For what, by the time we get certification, whatever that amount is, will reduce the towns' assessments for that the following month. So hopefully I did an okay job. How about questions?
Okay, school committee folks, questions? Maggie? Yes?
Hey, Dawn, now, I understand, you know, I understand that there's pressure from the towns to, you know, return back more money to the towns. I also have understood that we are getting a pretty substantial amount of CARES grant money that should help us to pay for all this extra expense. And so maybe we don't need that anymore. Can you just tell me about CARES grant money and how we can use it at the region?
Right. So directly to the three school districts, directly that we have access to, is just, is Title I appropriated monies that will be 80% of what your Title I money is this year. So for the region, it's about $80,000 additional. That hopefully is going to help cover, you know, some of the, we looked at that as helping some of the remission, the learning to catch up people up, right? Because we use Title I for tutoring and such. The other CARES funding actually sits at the towns. And so I have been in contact with both towns for the region because the region doesn't have access to those funds. So the item that we're hoping to probably tap into the two towns for that, one is our PPE, and the second one is hopefully technology. So their first initial proposals were due, actually, they got postponed. They're due on June 15th, but it's for any expenses that you've incurred since closure to June 30th. Well, up to this point, we haven't incurred a whole lot because we've been waiting. We don't want to be, jump the gun because I tell you that changes or the recommendations change daily. So I'm glad we didn't go buy a lot of thermo scans or, you know, no-touch thermometers because now that is off the table. So we've been cautiously careful about not spending money that may, it may not benefit us. So come July 1st, though, there's a whole nother round of applications that the two towns will be doing and we will be doing in with them to access the funds. Both towns got a substantial amount of money for our towns. I think Dover, I'm going to say, was about a half a million. And Sherburne, I think I'm going to say, is about $350,000. So there are, there is money there for us to hopefully capitalize on. And that's the plan for both the two locals, but then also the regions. So we will come up with the expenses that the region needs. And then we will spread that expense by the assessment percentage for them to file on their CARE grant applications. And then they'll be, basically would reimburse us.
Thank you.
So the problem is, is having, having access to those funds when we think we need it. So it's hard to put too much credence in that because we have to see how it all plays out.
Is it more of a reimbursement situation?
Yeah. Yeah. We'll, we'll have the expenditure and then apply for the reimbursement.
Okay.
So we need the money upfront, is what you're saying, really? So that's?
Well, yeah. I mean, that's just cash flow. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Other questions from committee? Michael?
Thank you. Michael Jaffe, a couple of questions, Dawn, first. Thanks for the, as usual, kind of step-by-step, careful explanation. The $650,000 portion of the operating surplus, as I heard you, as I understand, the lion's share of that even, it may go across years, but the lion's share of that is expected to be offset by decreased revenue? Whether it be this year through athletic fees or next year through Chapter 70 reimbursement, is that correct?
No. So I'm just, I was giving you a better feel of what your, what your true results of operations are because that $1,001,000 includes some unique items. So we did have $650,000, oh my goodness, what's going on? $650,000 of saving, we had $1,000,000 of savings. And that was breaking out the transportation and the coaching stipends because those are, those can be identified as not normal operations.
But those, those two items, don't those also correspond to decreased revenue either this year or next year, or anticipated next year?
I'm not, I guess I'm not following you. So I'm talking about just your, your results of operations and what makes up the $1,000,000.
Right. So we would have, let's call it the $650,000 of savings, that's what I'm focused on.
Okay. So that savings is comprised of additional health insurance savings for us. It's savings and some other closures for utility or some utility savings we already had. And we had a little bit more because of the closure. It's savings in, in our salary savings because of post-budget staffing changes. And we've had a lot of staffing changes this year where higher-tenured teachers have either took left or took other jobs and we've been replaced. So that accumulated quite a bit of savings itself. So those, those savings are in the $650,000. Those are normal operating types of savings that we can see on a year-to-year basis. So I was trying to bring it back to a more normal operating results to put it in perspective.
And so just, I don't want to harp on the point too long, but the, the busing savings is anticipated to, effectively, we're, we're going to have a larger share next year. We're anticipated. We saved this year. But next year, our reimbursement will, is anticipated to be substantially lower. And so those, those in some ways, even though it crosses fiscal years, those kind of are, you're trying to offset those against each other in some ways.
Yeah. So I'm using, I'm using revenue from this year to help offset the shortages next year for transportation and Chapter 70.
And then with the, with the coaching stipends, we also don't have the revenue this year from the athletic fees that would fund those stipends in an ordinary year.
Exactly. 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 But that's an extra $100,000 that you normally wouldn't have dropped to your bottom line. It dropped to the bottom line because we didn't hold spring sports. Right. So it's corresponding on your revenue side and your expenditure side that I was just trying to make that expenditure side operating surplus make more sense when you take out the one, the one, the couple of unique things that happened to us this year.
Got it. Thank you. And, and second question, more kind of general question around E and D. Just to kind of level set, the analogy of E and D to a regional district would be free cash at a municipality, correct?
Correct.
And so, you know, that is, is free cash kind of rainy day contingency money in situations that aren't expected, but you really don't have the, the time to wait for a, an appropriation or a borrowing in order to pay those expenses?
Right. Correct. Yeah. That is our, that is actually the, the regional school committee's free cash because on an ongoing basis, we don't have any place to go to like the towns do. So it is capped mainly to protect the districts. I mean, the member towns, so we're not holding on to an excessive amount. And that's why you have the 5% cap to provide that guidance to regional school districts.
Which has been what you generally targeted to the extent it's available.
Yes. I mean, I think there'll be stories here from some superintendents who walked in here where they had negative E and D. So it's not always as rosy. It goes with, you know, what's happening. But I think, given where we're going, it's, that's why it's our recommendation that we maintain the 5% E and D to protect us in these next couple of years that I think are, could be economical, economically challenging for all school districts.
Thank you.
Judy, you had your hand up before?
Yeah. And I think the last piece, Dawn, that you just talked about may have addressed it. But my question is, as I am preparing to help out with the planning for next year, I've been doing a lot of reading. And all of the things that are being suggested or floated that school districts do, like reconfiguring the cafeteria, you know, much smaller class size. I saw something today, was it from Dusty that said something like 10 students per class? You know, as I, as I think about that, that seems like, geez, how are we going to do that? Have to hire more educators? Have you, I'm getting a little nervous because I think it's really crucial for us to protect the health and well-being of our students and by extension, our community. Because that's who's going to get sick. If the kids, if the, if our students and our educators get sick, then everybody gets sick. So my question is, have you sort of run any, and I know this is probably impossible, but how, what do we do to plan for them?
Right. So I think we're waiting for the final guidance to come out next week. And then our task force is going to go in full, full operation mode. Without that guidance, we've already been throwing around some ideas, but it's still too premature. But I think with, we've been very careful about preserving some of our grants. That was another huge recommendation that they gave all school districts that as much as you could preserve some of your federal grants that we have for special education, for the Title I, to try to hold on to this year's monies so that we'll have more next year to deal with some of this. And they've given us greater latitude to be able to carry forward monies. So they are, they are giving us great advice about how to protect ourselves so that we're not dependent on looking for funds. But hopefully we'll have some here to get us through this next year or two.
Quick, quick question from a parent.
Wait, excuse, excuse me. Sorry. So you need to be recognized. So if I can see a raised.
So sorry, so sorry.
And actually, I just have to say that we, the policy, the way that works is that Sherburne Advisory and Dover Warrant can ask questions about that. But parent questions are really reserved for during the comments at the beginning, public comments at the beginning. I'm so sorry. If you do have questions, I'm sure that at some point you can reach out to school committee members at any point in time. It's just that this meeting is not the appropriate venue for that.
Got you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
So there, there are the two motions that I'm bringing forward for action tonight. And one is the transfer of the money to the regional transportation fund. And the second one is for you to revise your source of funds in your fiscal year '21 budget to reduce projected Chapter 70 revenues and to pad that with, to make that up with additional use of E and D. And I can, I can read those motions for Amy once you guys are ready to go. But I just want to throw that back out there. Those are the two motions I'm asking you to do this evening.
Okay. So let's see, do people have any questions about those specific motions? No? Okay. So yeah, Dawn, if you read those, that would be awesome. One at a time, then we'll do the roll call.
Okay. So we are, a motion to transfer the current excess Chapter 71 revenues of $85,989,000 to the regional transportation reimbursement fund.
Do I hear a motion?
Maggie, Sharon's so moved.
Do you have a second?
Michael Jaffe, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. Judy?
I think Stephen does have his hand up.
Oh, sorry. I don't, you know what? I don't have the right view. I apologize. Thank you. Stephen, yeah. Sorry, you had a question then?
Thanks, Ann. So I'm Steve Leahy, part of the Sherburne Advisory Committee. And it was not specific to this motion. I was actually, just wanted to speak in general on some of the financials that had been, were being addressed here just moments ago. I'd sent an email earlier in the day to a number of people, the Sherburne members of the regional school committee and Dr. Kew and Dawn as well. As you were addressing the surplus, that again, as Dawn pointed out, started out at about $1.2 million due to other reasons and different revenues or lack of revenues, it's really a surplus of $650,000. What I wanted to point out is that for the towns, we too are facing challenges next year as far as revenues and state reimbursements will be down for the towns as well. And so the towns are facing some of the similar issues that the regional school district is going to be facing. The surplus amount that starts out at $1.2 million, you know, which, again, I recognize there's $575,000 going towards capital projects. $175,000 or so towards next year's operating expenses, kind of rolling forward there. There is the additional $85,000, so in the, in the regional transportation fund, and then the $200,000. And all these numbers, I get it, I see it, there are justifications for them. However, as a representative of Sherburne's Finance Committee, I have to make note that the excess and deficiency fund that the district has is full. It is well more than full, right? It's a 5% plus, a lot, a big plus. And so as was discussed here a moment ago, the E and D fund is really for rainy day situations. And maybe fiscal year '21 is going to be one of those rainy day situations that one has to dip into the E and D fund rather than maintaining it at a full 5% plus in this case. And so as you guys are going through the finances and thinking about, and it looks like, you know, there's a potential return of $79,000 to be split between the two towns that fund the region, myself, as a representative of the Sherburne Advisory Committee and a number of the other members of the advisory committee, need to ask you to consider making a larger turnback to the towns rather than keeping the funds and spending them on the projects and the encumbrances that are being discussed here this evening.
So is, okay, so it was just a statement? There wasn't a question involved? Is that, I just want to make sure that you're, you're good? Or there's not something that we need to be addressing specifically? Like Dawn needs to be answering that we need to be addressing specifically?
Nope. I'm not asking Dawn to answer any questions. I am making a statement that the advisory committee would request that the regional school committee and the administration consider not spending these funds and returning a much greater portion of that money to the towns.
Okay. Thank, thank you. So we as, can I just ask really quickly, Dawn, can you just clarify for me? We can't legally have more than 5% in our E and D when it's certified, correct?
Right. Right. So that's what the, the turnback is.
Right. Okay. Right, okay. Michael?
A, just a short comment is, I, I would, I would feel irresponsible myself with the, the regional finances or if I were with the town in turning money back to taxpayers at this particular time of, of uncertainty. I know the five, the 5%, I think is, was, was probably derived based on having a fairly, fairly stable and predictable year-over-year experience. I think at the town, free cash is, is more in the nature of 10 to 15% guidance as to what's prudent. I think Sherburne's is what, between 1 and 2 million and Dover's is between 9 and 10 million. I'm, I'm, I'm actually quite concerned at just having the, the 5% with the, the great unknowns of what are we going to need to do to, to protect the, the health and safety of our kids and educators and, and maintain the integrity of, of the education at the schools because this is going to have to happen in a, in a pretty rapid manner. And we will not necessarily have the time to, to get additional funds. So I guess the way I'm looking at it is, is this is the, the, as, as rainy a day as, as you could have, at least on a, on a projecting basis until you get more, you know, kind of more concrete information as to what's going to be needed.
And I'll just add for the 200,000, that's the new sort of number out here for you this evening, is, is really underestimating what our potential shortfall could be. If it is 10% of fiscal year 20, Chapter 70, built into your budget was 122,000 of new money in fiscal year, for fiscal year 21. So we would be short that money plus 10% of fiscal year 20, which is the 227,000. So of the, I'm, we had a potential shortfall of 350,000, but I'm only recommending that we cover that shortfall, projected shortfall by 200,000 of that. I mean, if we were being really conservative, I would have said, let's do 350,000 and then we would have been below the, the 5% E and D, there would have been nothing to turn back.
Dawn, may I ask, what about the 175 that's being rolled forward and encumbered for next year's operating?
Yeah, so 100,000 of that, if you remember, was savings from our healthcare that we're putting towards our OPEB funding. And that's already been approved by the school committee back in March. 75,000 represented the revenue as of March, we thought we had $75,000 of extra revenue that we were, we were putting towards the budget because if we'd had that, if we'd known we were going to have that much revenue, your assessments would have been $75,000 less. So we're applying it to the budget to give you credit for that revenue. So we try to only use E and D where we can specifically identify one-time things or we have been taking, using E and D to fund the next year's budget for any revenue savings that has come our way because that would have reduced assessments had we known we were going to get that revenue. So indirectly, we're passing that along to you to be credited towards fiscal year 21.
Are there, are there any other questions from the regional members or from Dover?
The only other thing, Maggie Sharon Dover, I mean, the only other thing I'd like to say with regard to the requests from, from Sherburne is that I, I am deeply sensitive to the need to be conservative and careful with finances. It would give me no greater joy to get to next spring to find out that we have not in fact had any extraordinary expenses related to the health pandemic that we're going through, that we were able to open and operate our schools with efficiency and without needing to do any crazy things. And that all the human beings that work and go to our schools are healthy and safe. And if we get to the spring, we are not going to take the money and like go buy a Dover Sherburne Maserati to drive the schools around. Like, I promise you, we will take good care of it. And if we have lots of extra to give back in the spring because none of this came to pass and all the things worked out, like, I'll feel very happy to give that money back to the taxpayers, but this is all we've got. And like, I'm an educator all day long, like this stuff and trying to operate schools in this environment and make sure that the children that we take care of and the adults who we employ are safe is, is like actually kind of giving me a lot of agita and frighten. And Judy spoke to that as part of the task force. Like, I feel like I'd be a really bad steward of the finances to be like, yeah, we don't like really need our savings account right now. Like, I want to give the money back to you and, and, and I really do, but I feel like it's a really irresponsible thing to do. And I also, with regard, I know you alluded to capital projects and it sounds like maybe there would be an option for us to stop doing capital projects, but that's also how school districts and school, schools end up in big hot water because we don't like take care of our roof or take care of our heating system. And like, the things we're doing, they're not like sparkly new objects, like they're like legit things you need to do to keep your, operating your buildings. And that's all we got is like the buildings and, and keeping them healthy and safe for the next generation. So I really, in good conscience, feel like this is the responsible thing to do and I'm sad because I don't want to be an enemy with our colleagues in Sherburne or feel like we're not being responsible with the trust that you give us. But I really feel strongly that we're really trying to be responsible and do the right thing.
So Anne Jane has her hand.
Yes, yes, thank you Maggie, I appreciate that. And Jane, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So just a couple of comments, one being that the 5% is a maximum and we've had discussions many times about this in the past where I believe the RSC's official policy is in fact to keep it more like 4% than 5%. And I can certainly appreciate that these are, you know, unique times, but they're unique times for the towns as well, as Steve has pointed out. So, you know, I think for that reason, it's more appropriate, even though 5% is a maximum and is a cap, that the policy, the official policy of 4% be recognized. And Maggie, I want to just comment on capital as well because, as I'm sure you know, the towns have been very generous and very supportive of all the capital needs of the schools historically. But the practice that RSC has been engaging in over the past, you know, few years, a couple of years anyway, is, is the effect of that really is to take away from the towns' people the ability to have their vote on whether these capital expenditures should be made. And the townspeople have been very generous to this, to the school committee, you know, there's been support all the time there for the schools, for the regional schools. But, but let's be honest about what's happening here. I mean, that the townspeople are not getting to vote on those capital expenditures because of the way the money's being handled. And I, I think, you know, we just have to be honest about that in, in the way we look at it.
I'm just going to make a quick comment to that. Jane, thank you very much for your comments, I appreciate that. Just towards that, we had meetings with capital committees earlier in the year. And I think that you raise an interesting point and something that perhaps is a discussion that we should have, but I feel like that should have been had when we were meeting with the capital committees or when the budget, we first started talking about this because we're well through our budget process.
Yeah, and we announced, we announced last year that the savings that we had, that we utilized the Regional Transportation Reimbursement Fund would be to fund capital. So I think we've been honest with that and we do go through all the review processes with both towns on our capital projects where there's opportunities to say yes or no. I mean, to your point is where there has to be bonding, where there's, when there's borrowing on a project, that's when it gets voted. If you paid, if you paid free cash for capital projects, it gets, goes through your regular budget process and it's not a, an item that is voted on. So it all, it's only voted on by the townspeople if you're going to, well, in your total budget or if it's, it's a valid vote if it's going, if it's going to be, you're going to bond for it or borrow for it. So I think that's an important distinction there.
Well, with, with all due respect, Dawn, I, I do think that both free cash expenditures and borrowing have to be approved by the townspeople. And I totally appreciate what you're saying, Anne, about the capital committee review, but the capital committee is, is not the, the voters, you know? And so, and my point is not that these capital expenditures could have and should have been turned down, that's not at all my point. My point is just that this is something that normally would be voted on by the voters and the capital committee is not the voters. And, you know, the voters are not having an opportunity to, to weigh in on this. That, that's my only concern.
No, I can understand that. My, my reference was really much more towards the timeline that, I think, once again, I think these are good discussions to have, but I'm afraid that maybe we should be having the discussions and looking forward for future years, not for right, right now. And also just a quick, we had prior to COVID-19, our intention was to have our E and D, we discussed this in a public meeting, the, the E and D was going to be below 4%. So, and I understand you're saying the town is under the similar circumstances as the region is, but it's not like it's, this was planned on our part, it's our reaction to the situation. Once again, we're all doing the, the best that we can, just like you are, that's what we're doing too. Are we, Jane's your hand up again or is it still, is that from before? I just want to make sure that you don't have anything else you want to say.
No, no, thank you, it's not.
Okay, thanks. All right. Remember the motion that was made a while ago? And we've had a first and second, so Maggie, yes, you remember?
We had a first, second, and we were in discussion.
In discussion, yes. So I was going to say, are we, are we good with discussion? All right, Judy, we'll do, go a vote for a vote.
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael J F P, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you all. All right, Dawn, to the next one.
So the second motion will be to reduce the fiscal year 21 budgeted Chapter 70 revenues of 2,402,45,000 to 2,202,45. An increased use of E and D from 175,000 to 375,000. So you're adjusting your funding sources for your fiscal year 21 budget by reclassing 200,000 of Chapter 70 revenues to increase use of E and D. Just to sort of say what you're saying, to summarize what we're doing there.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved, Michael J F P.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Lynn Collins, second. Judy Wentz.
Judy, okay, Judy Miller then seconded, thanks. Discussion. No, okay. Judy, we'll vote then, Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael J F P, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. So the one last thing I wanted to just bring to the committee's attention is the budget process for fiscal year 21 since our towns to date haven't had their town meetings. We did submit our 112 budget package to Desi and we're awaiting their approval so that we can then give revised assessments to our two towns. As far as we know, Dover has slated to have their town meeting on June 29th, but until both of our towns approve the budgets, we will continue to operate in a 112 budget mode, which shouldn't have a huge impact on our operations predominantly because although we have some large expenses come July, because we prepay a lot of our expenses to take advantage of discounts, we don't have the payroll typically of a 112. If we have 112 of our revenue, our teachers and most of our school staff don't come on payroll until September. So from a cash flow perspective, we should be fine. And then with hopes of, as we roll into September, that we have an approved budget from both towns. So I will let you know once we get those revised numbers from Desi.
Thank you. And then, Dawn, do you do the appointment of the treasurer?
We got another, we got another thing on the financial report and that's on the OPEB Trust Fund.
Oh, OPEB Trust, sorry, I missed that one.
That's okay. We got, we got lots of stuff. So we're bringing forward to you tonight the funding policy. This was the last sort of administrative task that we needed to take, to do to complete our, our package. And so I have provided for you what we've been saying all along, I think what was going to be our funding policy. And I did have the policy that is in your packet reviewed by both our, well, both our new, our new team at Cars, but also Parker Elmore at Odyssey Advisors and also our auditors. So all three groups have reviewed and are comfortable with what we're proposing. The one piece of guidance I got from the Ask Rario consultant was, don't, don't have a policy that you can't meet because that really has an impact on how they view your discount rate. So the way the policy is written is that we will seek to appropriate at a minimum $100,000 as part of each year's operating budget. And if that goes back to that 100,000 that we're using from savings this year, that was E and D that we're putting into that line item, so we know we have a minimum of 100,000 for fiscal year 21, which is great. And we just wanted to reiterate that the primary source of funding will come from the pay-as-you-go savings derived from the recently agreed-upon cost share of retirees over the next four years, where we went from a 70/30 cost share to a 50/50 cost share by fiscal year 23. I note for you that if I take the base, our base premium costs in fiscal year 19 and take that 20% savings, it comes to about 140,000. So in my mind, that's the savings that we should try to preserve throughout this process so that once we get to fiscal year 23, we should preserve that 140,000, that hopefully that will be our annual contribution. And then any other, any other savings that we have, may have from census or plan changes within that group could also be contributing to the fund as long as it's in that expense line item.
And can I, Dawn, can I add? Yeah, that's okay. Um, we, it was really important to us in coming up with this funding policy that we make it neutral to the like ongoing operational costs and we tie it directly to the savings that was realized by changing the retirees' health plan benefits so that it's really kind of all rolled into, you know, folks are obviously paying more and also are getting a more stable retirement fund in exchange for that, which we feel is part of sort of the fair trade and being transparent with folks about what we do with, with taxpayer monies. It does not mandate that every single year we do this. I, I think that there is a strong desire on our part and also on the part of our, our discount rate providers and all the people that we do it, because if we say we're going to do it and we don't, it will adversely impact us. But it does not mean that like it's, it's like a forced thing. And so I think it's just important that people know that it's our, this is our policy, this is where we go. And if a disaster strikes, there are other options in terms of what to do. I just do think that in good faith, this ought to hopefully be our policy because I think that it's part of, you know, asking retirees to give up a longstanding benefit and in exchange, you know, offering them a much more stable promise that this benefit will be there for the long haul.
Sounds great to reiterate, thank you Maggie.
Thanks, and thank you to the group that worked so hard on doing this. Are there other questions?
Can I have a question?
Yeah, Lynn?
Yeah, Lynn Collins. Is there a reason we didn't go with the exact amount, 140?
Well, it gives us, because we don't have, we don't technically have the 140 until fiscal year 23. Yeah, and then it also gives us a little leadway. So it's, it's, it's sort of trying to give us if, if there are the minimum of 100,000 and then, you know, we can go over or under. I mean, we can go over that, but we're trying to set the minimum. So the minimum was something that I knew we had already set aside this year, we'll strive to do that in '22. By the time we get to '23, we should have accumulated that 140 and that hopefully will be the one going forward.
Yeah, okay, that makes sense, thanks.
Other questions? All right, then do I hear a motion to approve the OPEB funding policy stated in our packet? Do I have to be more specific than that?
No, that's fine.
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you, second?
Michael J F P, second.
Thank you. Discussion. All right, oh, Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael J F P, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you all. And thanks, Dawn, for all of your work on all of this. I know it's that you were mentioning earlier, getting out three pack, financial packets this week, tough work, we appreciate all the work.
Four, four, because I've got kind of agreements on joint.
Goodness, okay, so four.
It's a crunch, it's a crunch week.
It's a crunch week.
But all, all exciting stuff. So you may go on to the next agenda item. So the next agenda item is that with Maggie's assistance and some of my office staff here, we have executed the search for our next treasurer and have someone who is stepping forward with your approval tonight. We're sad to see Jim go after over 15 years, I'm gonna say it's 17 years that he's been our treasurer, which I think is a huge accomplishment. And I will have to personally say that he was a wonderful mentor to me as I stepped into this new position. For those of you who don't really know Jim, he's a former Dover resident, very involved in town work here. His wife was on school committee, he had three children go through the Dover Sherburne School System. So he was very much one of us, and I will, we will greatly miss him. But we are looking forward to having a treasurer who's a little more locally based and getting back to where the treasurer does a little bit more of the typical treasurer responsibilities here. That's been more difficult to do with our treasurer currently living out of state. So Maggie participated with me, we interviewed two highly qualified candidates. And after getting the feedback from all three, off four of us who interviewed and also doing some reference calls, we're bringing forward to you tonight John LaFles to be appointed your treasurer for fiscal year 21, knowing that this is an annual appointment that the school committee does. So we don't give long-term contracts on this particular position, it is a annual appointment. I provided for you John's resume. He brings not only business administration background, but also has served as a superintendent. And so I think he'll bring that lens to us. Some of the feedback I got from his conference calls is that he is financially savvy. He's a collaborative team player and just a generally nice guy. So we are really looking forward to bringing him on board and doing all the transition work over the next couple of weeks. And then I'll let Maggie share any comments she had, because she was so graciously participated with us in the interviews.
First of all, I just want to say a big thank you to Dawn and to the team at the business office for organizing the search and, and also for bringing two highly qualified candidates to the table. I'm, I'm watching the politics in Sherburne around a town treasurer. And, you know, I have to say, I was very, very skeptical about who might want to do this work. And I was delighted to have the opportunity to spend the afternoon with two, two people, either one of them would have been wonderful. I feel very excited that we have the opportunity for John to join us. I think in our conversations, he is easygoing, but clearly knowledgeable. He's confident, but not, not in a, you know, not in a egotistical type of way. I, I think his understanding of regional school districts, both the vocational schools that he's in charge of now, and also Tentasco, where he is currently the treasurer, will be very helpful to us. And one of the things that stood out in his references and that people spoke about him was his ability to help work with member districts, to help them understand the complexities of regional school budget issues. And I think as we all know, that's something that we work here really hard on. And, you know, we don't have 14 member districts, but, but I think that that's really important work. I see John coming in as a good partner to Dawn and a thought partner, and also someone who will be easy for us to deal with as well. So I'm very excited about the opportunity to work with him.
Awesome. Thank, thank you, and thank you for all of your work. And Jim Eggerd, obviously, for all of his years of service. All right, do I hear a motion? Sorry? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve John LaFles as treasurer for the Dover Sherburne School District for FY '21?
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Thank you. Gotta speed up the motions and seconds. All right, let's, we'll start, I'm going back the other way. Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Welcome aboard to John, and thank you very much.
Join us, hopefully at a live meeting, if not a Zoom meeting in the fall, so you can actually meet him in person.
That would be awesome. Thank you. All right, so now we're moving on to the 2021 student handbooks. I think it said in the agenda 2019, 20, but pretty sure they mean 2021. Do you, did John or Scott, do you have anything further you'd like to add, to add from the conversation from last month? Does anyone on the school committee have any quest, further questions? Michael Jaffe?
Yeah, thank you, Michael Jaffe. I had a, a question around, in middle school, around homework, in the homework section, I think it's in the homework section. I'm just kind of trying to get to it now, but there was something that I, I think just there, there may be something that's missing. Either that, or I just wasn't reading carefully. Yeah, so it's, these aren't even page numbered, but it's in the homework section. And it's towards the end where it has the, the amount of homework times, if homework is assigned. And it says approximately 10 minutes per grade total per night. Okay, so now I understand it, rereading it. So sixth grade would be 10 times sixth grade, or, okay. Got it. Sorry, now I get it.
That, that's okay. Any other questions? All right, then can I hear a motion to approve the 2021 Middle School Student Handbook as presented?
Maggie Sharon.
Maggie can approve it? Lynn approved Maggie's second, okay. Discussion? All right, we'll vote. Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Judy? And Anne Hovey, yes. Do I hear a motion to approve the 20, 2020, 2021 High School Student Handbook as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And second, so Judy moved, Lynn seconded. Any discussion?
No, well, Maggie Sharon, I just want to say thank you to both John and to Scott. You did a thorough review and updating, especially the homework policy, Scott, but also the other items in both of these handbooks. And I just want to say thank you, even though I know we're in a hurry, we've read them, they're thoughtful. I appreciated the time to talk about them last time. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I totally echo Maggie's sentiments. Thank you very much. And also thank you for getting to this. I thought it made a big difference for us to have a chance to talk about it, ruminate. That was really helpful. So thank you, thank you. Okay, well, we'll vote. That's where we are. All right, Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you. All right, now we're gonna move to the school improvement plans. Scott, do you want to start and talk a little bit about yours?
Sure. One thing that I think, given the current state of education, I think one thing we have to be open-minded to is that whatever plan we come up with final will have to be fluid, given the needs of, of what we have to do as educators for the wellbeing of students and staff. Having said that, we have three goals. Our first goal is around innovative teaching. And we actually got a jumpstart on that with remote learning, in that one of the major components of that will be our one-to-one initiative with the Chromebooks. But I think our, the past nine weeks have, have given us some insight into what we can do with devices and, and what we can, how we can engage students. That is not to be, it should not be said that we have perfected it. But we have a lot of interest of staff members who may not have gone down that road. So along with the one-to-one initiative, we, part of that is to try to become more efficient with Google Classroom, so we can better utilize that as a staff. So we're going to have a group of teachers hopefully trained. And we have a grant with DSEF to get an expert from outside the district to train a number of staff members who then can be, train their colleagues. The other piece is we're gonna continue on with the special subjects and world language with the standards-based reporting. That was very successful with our special subjects this year, that, that took it on. And I think parents, the feedback from parents was very positive in, in what they got from those reports. There are a few other things, but I'm just gonna give you the, the major points in each of these goals. The second goal is around health and wellness. And again, one of the, the big ones is the start times, is how we going to transition to the later start times and continue to work with the high school to better, better utilize our resources. And from conversations John and I and Stephen had, I think some of those resources are, are students at the high school, in particularly working with our middle school students. So we've already started that, and you heard about music. But I think there's other opportunities that, that exist there as well. And Beth and our RTI committee has, have been working already on identifying screeners to see with the remote learning, to screen where students are academically. But we also wanted to look for a screener that can help us identify any students who might be struggling from the social emotional side. You know, this, this has taken a toll on, on a lot of people. I think it certainly, I, I, I have older kids, but I would imagine that for parents with younger kids that have been home, trying to homeschool and work, it has taken a huge toll on parents as well. So that's a, that's an angle I think we need to look at too, is what resources can we provide for parents to after going through this ordeal? Our teachers have already started about, we have in the school improvement plan, investigating advisory and implement, you know, and, and work towards implementing it. But teachers already recognize, particularly with remote learning and, and the, it's fairly, I, I don't wanna say obvious, but there's a good probability that we will be in some sort of form of remote learning for the fall. So advisory, advisories would be a big step in, in helping students through that. So that's something that we're, we're gonna go at with a lot of enthusiasm. And then we'll also work to continue working to develop our GRIT program, which had a very successful year. And we're, we're very proud of what both Eric and George did with, with those students, working with their colleagues. And our third goal is just, again, it's a, we're pushing forward our curriculum review. And it's almost, it's, it's very similar to last year's goal, because we did not finish, given we missed a third of the year, and social studies really did not have a, a chance to put the finishing touches on their doings. We will, we've added in their math and ELA, will take feedback that they got from Beth and mostly outside consultants to identify strategies and instruction, but also how to utilize small group or, or the resources that we have with small group moving forward. And again, world language is moving to the standards-based reporting, which I, again, I think is really good, given the, where world language has, has moved with our Flesk kids coming in. So that's just an overview of our three goals, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Scott, and thank you also to the school council for their work on this.
And that was at the top of my list. Thank the, the SAC members, including Judy Miller, who was on the committee. So yes, we had a fantastic council. They were, they were fantastic. I'd get out of those meetings, and I, I had several conversations with the members. And it was like, the conversations we had were so healthy and so, it was all about the school community and making it better for kids and, and for teachers and for everybody. So I thank them wholeheartedly.
Yes, thank you. Judy?
Yeah, and I would like to say thank you to Scott. I, I also really enjoy those meetings, and, and there was a lot of really good conversation about improving the schools and the school community. And, and I really, it was really, really a good group. And thank you for all the work you've done on this this year.
A question? Is it, and this may not be the right place for it, but as I was reading through both of the improvement plans, my, my overriding thought was, how is this, how are these plans impacted by the current crisis? And I was wondering if it makes sense if they had, if these plans had a column that basically said, you know, implications of, you know, COVID-19? Or is it, or is that not the right place for it? But I know that was everything, I mean, as I read through it, I'm like, huh, I wonder what's gonna happen now? And just wondering.
Well, the one-to-one devices, that will be, that'll be fantastic for our students, whether they're here or remote learning. Because if they have a device now, it'll be a new device. And so access to remote learning will be much, much better. So it, it, it all plays into what we're trying to do. And either with blended learning, remote learning, or, or students in the classroom. So that part of it is, is big. And also the wellness of students, identifying, being able to identify students if they have struggles, if there's a deficit from, from where we think they should be, and also from the social emotional standpoint. But I agree, there, there's, you know, that what's going on with, with, with COVID and all of this, it, it really, it, it, there are a lot of unknowns. And, and that's why I said in the beginning, it has to be fluid as to.
Which is what, like, I was wondering, is that the, is that maybe the reason that these plans don't? Because I was, I was wondering if there ought to just be a column that says, you know, probably, you know, nine out of 10 of the comments in that column of, you know, COVID implications would be unknown, unknown. But I, I don't know if it was, it's just, if it would be useful to others as well to be able to read these improvement plans with specific references to whether and how these action items are gonna change based on what we're going through right now.
Wait, Beth, do you, I saw you got off mute. Beth, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just gonna explain that I kind of see it as a placeholder in time that, you know, as Scott said, it's, it's a fluid document. And as we figure out what the fall looks like and how long any of these stages of different types of learning will last, I think we'll always prioritize what's, you know, most important in the moment for kids and what's capable, what we're capable of doing without overloading any one person. And as you'll see, even with Andrew's goals, as he presents them on Thursday, and as our teachers are, you know, their evaluation plans are on hold, their goals are on hold, so they will just pick up in the fall as they can. So I see it more of a bookmark. And, and we just have to use our judgment as we go, just like we will this summer as we get more information.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Michael Jaffe. Thank you, Beth.
Yeah, I, to, to Lynn's point, I, I wonder if it would make some sense to reflect in September and at least, you know, give Mr. Kellit and Mr. Smith the opportunity to come back and say, hey, you know, based on what we know now, because we're back in session, we're, we're going to perhaps drop one or two to next year and reprioritize to put one up at number one. So maybe we could just put a placeholder in, in, in an agenda to check in, to see if they want to revisit once there's more information known about how things are going to look.
Sure. That would work for you guys. Okay, then we will definitely, we'll put that in. I'd like to reiterate what Scott and then Beth both said, that this has got to be fluid. That would work for you guys. Okay, then we will definitely put, we'll put that in. I'd like to reiterate what Scott and then Beth both said, that this has got to be fluid. The situation continues to be fluid. It's a living document. Even though we voted in, it's always a living document. I'd also like to add a thought. Once again, this was written, I realize, before the events of the last two weeks, but if perhaps the thought, something about inclusiveness, it can be added, or maybe something to think about when we check back in to see how that can be incorporated more fully. Okay, so we then we need, are there other questions on Mr. Kellert's? Do you want to just? Let's vote the middle school one and then we'll go to the high school. If that's okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the 2020-2021 School Improvement Plan for the Dover Sherburne Middle School?
Maggie Sharon, so moved.
Thank you. Does second, please?
Lynn Collins, second.
Thank you. Discussion? Good. All right, then we will vote. Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you so much, Scott, to you and your team. We appreciate that. And actually, I'm looking forward to seeing what the summer slash beginning of fall brings. It'd be interesting, it'll be interesting, certainly like other years.
It will bring a lot of agita between now and this, but that's all right.
Yeah, I'm sure. John, I'd love to hear about the high school.
Okay, sure. So thank you. Similar to Scott, you know, there's some fluid motion with ours, but what we do know is obviously we're going to have a later school start next year. So our first goal is around the flex block and really fine tuning the purpose and the meaning and the value and really trying to make the most of that flex block because that's going to be new for us. The middle school has had an age block for a while, but for us, this is going to be a new concept. So within that, we're looking at advisory, which is a key component. And advisory is something that we had planned for the spring and then, you know, COVID-19. So that's going to be one of our priorities is looking at the flex block and some additional time for advisory. We're also looking at the impact of flex as it pertains to because as you know, both the choral and the band program will have their music opportunities during that period. So we want to be able to check in with that. We've even talked about, okay, how would we coordinate advisory with that? And what we might do for those kids is align them with their music teachers, but we'll certainly take a look at that. We also want to see what type of collaboration we can have between the high school and the middle school because we see a lot of different opportunities for this. And because we're a small school district, we really feel like we can take advantage of these unbelievable opportunities for our middle and our high school kids to collaborate. We already know that they will in the the performing arts. But we'd also now like to see it in some of the other academic areas, some of the mentoring components as well. So it's a real opportunity. So that's going to be our first goal is really strengthening and implementing strong programs to use during that flex block throughout the school year. The second one is going to be fostering and promoting and implementing innovative teaching practices that are aligned with both our portrait of a graduate, that too much work has been done under Beth's leadership in the district, and also aligning with that of NEASC, our accrediting institution. We received notice from NEASC about three weeks ago. And I don't know if Ms. Hovey was on that too, but I know sometimes they put the chair on and the superintendent. They have asked us to push out to the spring because they would not be able to visit us in the fall because of closures. Everything is now backlog. And even if we said we want it to maintain in the fall, which we're glad that it's the spring because it gives our folks more time to, you know, just prepare for such a visit, they probably couldn't accommodate us. So they're going to come in the spring of 2021. We will have time to continue to address the portrait of a graduate competencies as well as NEASC. And to Ms. Collins' point about, or actually Ms. Hovey's point about, you know, recent events and how we can incorporate those, the cultural competency actually fits in really well with these innovative teaching practices. And and I intend on having that role into it. We're already doing a lot of discussion with the English and social studies departments around how can we better serve all of our kids in a culturally competent curriculum? Certainly, you know, we've taken some really positive steps. We've done some really interesting book reads. We have some new curriculum. But we need to step that up. We need to continue to move that forward. And I do think that's an area that we can do that. And our third one is the remote learning, blended learning. What we do know is we're probably going to have some type of blended learning in some shape or form, just because of the some of the restrictions that are coming out about how many students in a class and knowing the size of our school. We know we're going to have to incorporate something. So it it might only be half a year if we're thinking optimistically, but maybe it'll go a little bit longer. And we and we know that we need to have that in place and ready to roll day one, so that we're giving our students the best opportunities to be successful, to be able to collaborate, and then also our teachers, the tools. I will say that in talking to some of my Jada-like groups, I actually think we're really ahead of the curve in terms of our central office leadership and forming the task force. From what I'm hearing from some other principals and some other schools is they've they've got some things that they're rolling out, but we are far in advance of that and already have our categories, already have things sort of figured out with with regard to the the summer program and then leading into the fall. Michael, that's a great cat. All I saw was a cattail go across Mr. Jaffe. So those are our our three goals. Some of those goals, to the point of the regional school committee members asked, saying, you know, coming back in September. Yeah, absolutely. I would love to do that because I think we will be able to give more specifics to, okay, here's what we're going to be doing in the month of September, October. We're anticipating November, December, January might look like this, but we can certainly give you more. We're hoping that we get a little bit more guidance from Desi. What we have found sometimes with Desi is you get some guidance and then it's a, hey, good luck team. So, you know, we also are smart enough to know at DS that some of these things we have to figure out on our own and we'll do what's best for the kids of Dover and Sherburne.
Sorry, thank you, John. I appreciate that. And yes, Michael, it's a great cat. I do have a quick question. This it's okay, like, we don't have, we're not risking losing accreditation or anything.
We are not, no, not, not at all. So the guidance coming from NEASC is they had to push it off. Our reports that we've given them, we are all up to date. So we're we're fine. There's nothing that we owe them. What might actually help financially is they're actually thinking about scaling back their visit when they come in the spring. So maybe a couple, you know, fewer people and subsequently, even with this reconfigured NEASC, as this Fatori can tell you, it's still expensive. And accreditation is still an expensive endeavor. And I I'm not quite sure we always get the money from that. I mean, it's great having them on site. But I think sometimes in this virtual world, I start to question, well, are there things that they could review and give us feedback and maybe not have to put them up in a hotel with conference rooms and dinners for three nights? But that's, those are the rules that we have to play by for now. But no, absolutely, we we are not whatsoever. In fact, they were grateful. We were one of about 12 schools that they asked to push it off because they actually said they had fewer concerns based upon where we were. Some schools were looking at a new building. Some schools were looking at a, you know, a major issue going on. We are really looking at fine tuning. And I do want to point out, one of the the key areas of of growth that we talked about was a growth mindset. And it and it's so ironic that this pandemic has actually, in many ways, given a lot of us ways to develop a much stronger growth mindset. Our teachers are looking at instructing in different ways. I think they're having an appreciation, in some cases, for, you know, how students learn, maybe in their own home, right, with their own children. So if there is a silver lining, I think sometimes you see through this, these challenges and you figure, okay, I've got to do something different. I got to look at this in a different way. And we're even doing that with our technology. Going into next fall, teachers are asking about tools that they can use that enables them to you know, toggle between screens and do a lot more things with kids and maybe a lot more of the flip classroom models instead of, okay, I typically would would talk to students if they were in my class, I'll just do that on Zoom. And they're learning that doesn't always work, or that only works for a short period of time. You then have to use other creative tools to make your teaching invigorating, come alive and help students understand.
Thank you. Other questions from the regional school committee members? Comments? No? All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. And thank you then also to your school council.
Yes, and I want to point out the excellent work from Mr. Jaffe. So, Michael, thank you for all of your time and efforts as part of school council. I'm sure that you enjoyed those conversations with the kids. One of the luxuries I have of having the high school is we have a strong number of kids on that council and they are great to listen to. And their ideas and discussions that we have really make those meetings very meaningful.
And make it easier for you also.
They do. That's right. Right.
All right, well, thank you. Do I then hear a motion to approve the 2020-2021 School Improvement Plan for the Dover Sherburne High School?
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you. Second?
Maggie Sharon, second.
Thank you.
Lynn Collins, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a vote. Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Judy? And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you so much to both Scott and John. I appreciate that. So the district's opportunity plan, Beth, is that you? Yes, thank you.
Sure. So I'll be brief. Basically, this is the first time since 1993 that there has been an influx of funding into Chapter 70. And this funding is earmarked for addressing persistent disparities in achievement among subgroups. So we had one of nine evidence-based programs that we could select. And based on the data that our district has been looking at for the last few years, we thought it would be best to support the the growth of the whole student and that, and when we say student, we mean all students regardless of race, first language, socioeconomic status. So we had an increase of I believe $117,000 this year. And knowing the limitations in how we could spend it and the planning that, you know, Dawn and you as a committee did in terms of building the budget and what would go into the budget, we thought it would be best to put that money towards the secondary coordinator, who is going to be supporting Kate McCarthy, in that he is going to really be able to develop a more robust data model with our RTI teams and track data and develop interventions that will support all of our students. So that's the proposal for the use of those funds.
Okay, Beth, thank you very much for all your work on that. I know that there's, it's very complicated right now with all of the hoops and things that are happening so fast and changing. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, hearing none. Do I hear a motion to the Dover Sherburne Regional School District Student Opportunity Act Plan as presented?
Judy Miller, so moved.
Any or second?
Michael Jaffe, second.
Thank you, Michael. Discussion, hearing none. Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
And Anne Hovey, yes. Thank you. All right, we're almost done. Just, we're now to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the RSC minutes from May 5, 2020?
Michael Jaffe, so moved.
Second?
Judy Miller, second.
Thank you. No discussion, no changes. All right, Maggie?
Maggie Sharon, yes.
Lynn?
Lynn Collins, yes.
Judy?
Judy Miller, yes.
Michael?
Michael Jaffe, yes.
And Hovey, yes? All right, that looks like it. Remember that we do have two, we have a meeting then Thursday, a joint meeting, and then we have meetings at the end of the month. I believe it's June 24. I'd like to take a quick moment. I realized that they've not had their official graduation ceremony, but congratulations to the class of 2020. And especially to our two committee members who have children who are, who have graduated. So congratulations. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
You sure? Second?
Lynn, second.
All right, I'm all in favor. We'll just say yay. Thank you so much. Sorry this went so long. I appreciate all of your work.